I'll call the meeting to order. Andy? I want you to listen to the evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm may sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you've reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. You all received the minutes in your packets for tonight. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Not going to have a motion to accept the minutes? And a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. The minutes are approved. We've got two public hearings on the agenda tonight. Public hearing and possible action on amendment of the subdivision regulations, section 6.04, clarifying setback requirements for various classifications of public roads and private roads, and common driveway easements. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to provide public input on the amendment to the subdivision regulations clarifying setback requirements? If there are none, public hearing on the amendment is closed, and any discussion from the planning commission, the floor is open.
I'm still opposing the 10-foot setback on the common driveway. He's married it right before the meeting. If I were standing against that wall, and you were standing against that wall, that would be in front of my house, in front of your house, and then you've got a driveway, common driveway going between you. And I still think it's too close. So I oppose.
Thank you for your input, Bruce. Any further comments? If not, a motion is in order. Do I have a motion on the amendment for the subdivision regulations clarifying setback We've discussed this at length in past meetings.
A question, Mr. Chairman. We're recommending that this goes to the commission.
The subdivision regulations are under our purview.
Oh, okay, so this is final here?
This is a final action by the planning commission. John?
Let me clarify. Under state law, anything to do with a private easement has to go to the county commission for their confirmation. So this will be a final action by you, subject to them confirming their approval of anything to do with the private easements. And that was the issue the last time it went before them. The county commission didn't like the 20 feet, felt that that was too excessive, and that they wanted something less, and we're going to be giving them something less, which is 10 feet this time.
But it does not go through the public hearing process. It's a confirming action by the county commission. A motion to approve, or it, or to disapprove?
A motion to approve, sir.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
No.
Roll call.
Andy Allen?
No.
Brad Bowers?
No.
David Caldwell?
No.
Sean Carter?
No.
Ron French?
Yes.
Geneva Harrison?
Yes.
Jeff Hedrick?
Yes, sir.
Bruce McClellan?
No.
Jerry Roddy?
Yes, sir.
Clifford Walker?
Yes.
Ed Stuckey?
Yes. All right, motion carries with six, four, and five nays. So it will go on to the county commission for confirmation. Public hearing and possible action to recommend the closure of a portion of Callahan Road from intersection with Wright's Ferry Road and proceeding westward for a distance of 1,000 feet to termination in a new cul-de-sac. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the recommendation on the closure of a portion of Callahan Road? If not, public hearing is closed, and the closing of a portion of Callahan Road is open for discussion. John had, or staff had provided a memo on your desk, which was not in the packet. The Alcoa Planning Commission has acted on it. Maryville doesn't have to get involved, do they? But Maryville has recommended, and we are not the primary on this. Alcoa is the primary, but it needs our recommendation or input as well. Commissioner McCallum? I make, are we sending this to the county commission?
It'd be a recommendation to the county commission, yes.
I'd make a recommendation to the county commission since the airport owns both sides of the road, and it's foreexpansive of the airport to send it to the county commission.
We have a motion to send it on to the county with our recommendation for closure, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Next item on the agenda is public input for any remaining items on the agenda. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to items that are on the agenda yet to be covered tonight? If not, public input is closed, and we'll proceed on to site plans. C and C Trucking on East Lamar Alexander. Roger?
This is to relocate the current C and C trucking on East Lamar Alexander Parkway to its new location, which is just behind the nursery. It's on tax map 53, parcel 14, and that's the nursery that we just approved a site plan a few months back. The site plan indicates that the building setback requirements will be met by the proposed structure, and I put it was 120 by 50, but it's actually 125 feet by 50 feet. Existing house that is located on the property will be used as office. Site plan does indicate that the drainage will be directed to an existing detention pond that is already constructed. It does have a drainage structure located in it. Justin took a look at it, and basically that structure would need some repairs, and the basin itself would need to be stabilized. And I'm also waiting on calculations. The engineer did get in contact with me today. He's working on those calculations, but he's backlog, so he was wondering if it could be voted on with the stipulation of those calculations being submitted. So that's an update on the calculations. And the applicant would like to actually move the existing building as it is, which it's a mixed split-faced block and metal building, without having to do all the design requirements that we require. His argument is that it's going to be sitting back behind that nursery, really not going to be visible from the highway. And if you've been out there, it will be kind of tucked in back there and hidden. But they did provide me with the updated facade view of it. The one you have has seven and a half courses of split-faced block. The one they submitted to me has 10, 10 and a half. That takes it up to 10 feet, so it would get the 50% non-metal. They did add two more windows, and that's with all the garage doors, that's about the best they could do to achieve that 5% glass. Still a little short on that, but I just don't know where else they'd put glass on that structure. The buffering will be sufficient. They've got a buffer plan to buffer around the campus of the business from all the abiding
Anything else, Roger?
That's all I've got.
There is no, according to your comments, there is no lighting, so lighting is not a concern.
In my report, there's no outside lighting will be on campus.
Floor is open for comments. Commissioner French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Roger, are they going to move this thing intact? Is that their plan on moving the building? I mean, I'm curious. It looks to me like they're going to move it, tear it down, move it brick by brick, and then redesign it and put more windows in. To me, is that what they're planning on doing? And if that's the case, seems to me they're constructing, reconstructing it, and trying to skirt the issue of design standards. I'm curious what they're planning on doing.
I don't think it's possible to move it intact. The applicant may be able to answer that question better than I, but I don't think it'd be possible to move that structure intact.
I guess my question is, and it's up to the commission here. If you don't want to meet the design standards, and all you want to say is, well, I want to move this building and take it over here and tear it down and reconstruct it, and then do away with the design standards, to me, that's trying to skirt the issue of design standards. Personally, that's what it sounds like.
Well, that's not their argument for not meeting the design standards. Their argument for not meeting them or not bringing the building up to them is that it's not going to be seen, it's not going to be clearly visible from the road. It's going to be behind an existing nursery, and it's set quite a distance back, too. So that's their, you know, common sense wise is, your design criteria is for the appearance, but if nobody sees them, it's kind of like a tree falling in the forest and nobody's around. You know what I mean? That's their argument for that.
The building, can I add something?
Mr.? Go ahead and approach the microphone.
The new building is going to be 570 feet from the road right of way to where the proposed building is going to be. So we do set way 570 feet from the road right of way. It's going to be at the back of the property line, 40 feet off of it there. We've got a tremendous amount of screening from the landscape place, and then also we've got our, we've got some additional screening done by the, there's some block bins that are probably about eight, six to eight foot tall. They go across for the bins for the landscaping, for rock, mulch, and things like that. So you come towards the microphone, so we can catch you.
So I was just going to add that. Could I talk something out, Mr. Chairman, please? And I see what you're saying, Mr. French, and I agree to a certain extent till we get to this. Absolutely, he's got to take it apart to get it across the highway. I do kind of the same nature of work that this company does, and have a shop comparable, but with too many windows. The nature of what we do, more windows is a bad thing. And it's hard to do anyways, because with dump trucks, track hoes, dozers, so on and so forth, you got to have huge garage doors. So with that being said, the glass criteria, it's really hard to achieve. And I think what he's done here, they came back and they've added some windows, added two more, made the front look nice. He's probably 500 feet or so now where he is existing. He's going to be that again, plus the nursery is going to be in front of it. I just appreciate the fact that he's staying, and I think this is a good deal, and it's something we ought to look at. I'm highly in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger, could I ask a question?
Yes.
What they've submitted here, what was on our desk tonight?
Yes.
And Mr. Pitts, is this what they are proposing to do, or are you requesting that they not do anything?
Please get up. I guess in theory, we would, our main intent would be just to move the exact same building across the street as is. But if, try to meet some of the design criterias the best we can, this would be the Plan B.
Okay. Just one clarification on-
Yeah, and the garage doors, they are where they are. I mean, that's the nature of the building there. They're 12 by 12 garage doors, they're already cut in. I mean, it's the exact same building, we've just tried to add to it to try to meet some of the design requirements on Plan B.
Okay, thank you.
Are you just going to cut it in sections and carry sections across over there and weld it back together?
It's all bolted together, so it'll be completely disassembled. It's all bolted together, and it'll all be totally taken down, disassembled, and taken over there and rebuilt.
Okay. Commissioner Hedrick, did you have something additional?
I just want to say, in reference to Mr. Pitts, and your question, the, I think the Plan B option is what looks good and more favorable than the building now, and that's, I just want to clarify.
That's kind of why I was clarifying, because-
Yes, sir.
Commissioner McCallum?
A motion to approve, to subject to staff's recommendation. I like the buffer they've done from the rear property with the syphilis to kind of block it from the residential areas. And I can see that there's, as far as they are from the highway, I don't see the other issue being that major. But I would go with the Plan B also.
Okay, let me make sure, let me clarify the motion. The motion is to approve the site plan with the elevation as presented to us tonight. Correct?
I believe he said they were going to go 10 feet with a brick, though. Is that correct?
This was a good point. For split face, or-
Yeah. And we have a second?
Second.
No, we have a second. Clifford, second. Any further discussion? All right, the motion is to approve the site plan with the updated front elevation that was presented to the commission tonight, which includes basically three windows in the office area and the 10 and a half courses of concrete block. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Thank you. 231 West Miller's Cove Road, expansion of non-conforming storage unit use.
This is a, at the property located at 231 West Miller's Cove Road, identified on tax map 83, parcel 11.02. The property is zoned all one, the existing uses of many storage buildings, buildings that were established prior to our zoning regulations. The proposed expansion is 143 by 20 buildings and a six and a half, or 60 feet, that should be six, but I left the O off, 60 by 15 building, kind of set as an angle there. The larger building will have a couple of units at the end that are only 15 feet deep. These structures will be built perpendicular to the road of existing buildings on a gravel area that is currently used to store RVs. All building setbacks will be met by the proposed structures, except for the front setback along Highway 321, and the BZA has granted a variance for the placement of this proposed structure to be 30 feet from the highway right of way. No buffering is required for this request due to the application of section 6.10 below.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner McCallum?
I want to ask Mr. Roddy a question, since he drives by this constantly, I'm sure.
Three days.
Do you think those buildings, where they're proposing them, are going to be a site?
You can't even see them.
You can't see them?
You don't see them, so.
Approaching, approaching the complex from the Townsend side headed into Maryville, the existing building, you can barely see, you can see the existing buildings. This, so you can see this, the face here, but as, but as you get there, you have to really be looking up, and you can barely see the roofs. It's through that cut right there, just before you get to Foothills Parkway. Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. There's no further comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Preliminary Platts Major Subdivisions. Montgomery Farms subdivision off of Big Springs Road by Montgomery Farms LLC. Doug? Commissioner Hedrick is going to abstain and sit in the audience for this discussion, so.
Okay, Montgomery Farms subdivision off Big Springs Road. There are 61 proposed lots. We have six lots along Big Springs Road, and 55 are to be served off of New County Roads, and a common driveway easement. I'm going to go through the outstanding items to be completed. I'll make a few comments. You can look at the plat, and if you have any questions, I will try to answer them, and Kevin Pitts is here, as well as Mr. Hedrick. The outstanding items to be completed are on page six. I am going to read them into the record. Number one, all instructions in this staff analysis, including a pre-construction meeting with staff, state permits, and construction of all improvements, including road, drainage, and utilities. I would just like to add a comment that there may be some modifications to the drainage plan, and we'll work that out with the engineer at the pre-construction meeting. Number two, closed depression determination from the state of Tennessee, including any necessary permits. And number three, a property owner's association shall be required for the storm drainage facilities, common driveway, and site distance easement along Big Springs Road. And that's all I have for outstanding items to be completed.
Any comments or discussion, Commissioner? Oh, Commissioner McCallum?
It's good to see this size of subdivision get submitted. It's been a couple of years, many years, I think, since we've seen one of these. Quick question, is this all septic, or is it any sewer at all?
It's all septic.
All septic. I think I'll propose to approve the preliminary plat.
We have a motion to approve the preliminary plat and a second. Any further discussion or comments? I guess I would echo Bruce's comments. It's kind of good to see a new subdivision come before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Final Platts Major Subdivision, GM Properties, lots three and four off of 411 South by GM Properties.
Yeah, you saw a previous plat of this for lot two, lot two along 411, a month or two ago. What the owner's doing now is they're, you can see there's two existing metal buildings on lots three and four, served by a commercial drive, or what, that's the name of the road, I guess. Is that the name, Kevin? Commercial Drive?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a private road, but it's a paved private road. The intent now is to divide off that road, and that road will still serve the remainder in the back of the property. The outstanding items to be completed are on page eight, and I'll also, I'll read those, but I also want to mention, there's two letters attached. One is from Mr. Dunlap, and one is from Henry Rising. If you divide less than five acres on a private road, the private road has to be a paved private road, and it has to meet county road standards. These letters confirm that it not only meets county road standards, but it was actually built to a commercial road standard. And I'll let you read those letters if you like. I won't go into a lot of detail about them, other than to say they do meet that requirement. And, let's see, I lost my place. Okay, yeah, page eight. Outstanding items to be completed. Number one, POA or maintenance agreement for the maintenance of the private road easement. Number two, signature plats, including environmental health department certification, pending final review, and a $20 plating fee. That's a $20 per lot plating fee. That's all I have.
Thank you, Doug. Commissioner McCallum?
Chris, is this the limit of what he'll be able to do off of that unless they make it a public road?
Not necessarily. I mean, if they extended it, now, there's opportunity, they could, you know, even do a common driveway off the end.
Without making it a public road, would they, just have to be five acre tracks?
There's some options for five acre tracks off that easement that wouldn't even apply to the planning commission. They could be exempt. For example, they could extend the common driveway, get maybe one or two more lots, maybe three. Even though it's 50 foot and a private road, I mean, it doesn't have to meet common driveway standards, so they could build a common driveway off the end, they could put a paved road off the end. I'm talking a lot of hypotheticals here, I'm sorry. They could put a paved road off the end and ask for the whole thing to be taken in by the county, because it already meets the standard.
But as it is, five would be the limit, right?
No, it's a private, it's a private road, not a common driveway, so I would say they could put a common driveway in and get five more. Does that sound right, Doug?
Yes.
But I mean, it meets the standard. It's a, you know, it's a paved commercial road. It's wider than our standard county roads, and it's got more asphalt and more stone. It was built for truck traffic.
Any other questions or comments?
You will need to keep in mind that the remainder of the property in the back is not zoned commercial, so it would have to be something that's residential in the back. And Doug's correct, it could, the road could be extended, it still could be a private road, it would be residential, could be a common driveway, and you'd get five lots back there, so it is quite a bit open to develop in the back, but it's going to be
Do I have a motion? Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, uh, subject to meeting all requirements.
We have a motion, do I have a second? And a second. Motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations and requirements, and a second. Any further input? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Revised Myers property off of Cedar Creek Road by Bernard Myers, two lots, one lot with road frontage, one lot served by a twenty-five foot driveway easement and a remainder greater than five acres with county road frontage.
Okay, um, we saw this plat back in September of last year. It was approved, and it was approved a little differently. Let me see. If you'll notice, track one is a flag lot touching the road. Previously, it was an easement. Okay, this is going to make a difference. Previously, it was not a flag lot, it was an easement and the easement went across, it went across the Myers property, which is the remainder, where you see the one hundred year flood area, there was an easement in that section. And at that time, the easement served track one and track two. In order to, it, it was a common driveway. In order to get approval, the owner had to improve the common driveway, which it is paved, but they have to bring in utilities, water and electric and do some other things. Since that time, they've shown it as a flag lot, so that lot now touches the road. That means the easement only serves one lot exclusively. And our regulations state that the improvements don't have to be made to get final plat approval when only one lot is being served off of an easement. So, they've just resubmitted the plat with a little bit different design, so they don't have to meet those requirements and still can get final plat. And the, um, new, those were the, let's see, those were the, that was the old one, John. And I still got it wrong. Um, on page ten, revised outstanding items to be completed. And I'll slow down if you want me to. The, the old outstanding items to be completed are in there, but they, we'll be disregarding them and accepting these if you approve this plat. Number one, environmental health department certification on the final plat. Number two, common driveway note and flood map reference for remainder on the final plats. And number three, signature plats and a twenty dollar per lot plating fee. And if you need me to explain any of that again, I'll.
Okay, any questions or comments? Commissioner McClellan?
I don't really oppose the plat, but since I oppose the ten foot setback, I'll vote against this one.
Let me just say why that's on here because that was between, that's the only number I had to give in the survey here at the time, because that's what we were working off of, it's ten feet.
That is what the standards are at this point?
It is.
Our standards are nothing.
Yeah, they're nothing. They're not even ten foot, so he agreed to put ten foot on here. And until the county commission acts, it's still nothing, so.
We have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner McClellan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve, uh, carries. John, uh, long range planning, letter from Rob Gutter concerning plating, uh, common areas and additional information.
Yes, I reproduced the letter that you had from last meeting, uh, in my memo, and, uh, I've given you some examples that you had requested. Uh, there's one extra example on your table that we found after we had put the, uh, memo together, uh, and this is one that actually has gone to tax sale, uh, and has a retention area on a standalone parcel. Uh, and it's owned by somebody now because of the sale on the courthouse steps. And we had, we had actually an inquiry in the planning department of how it can be listed, and we said it can be listed as a standalone detention area. So it causes some problems, I guess. Uh, this is for your discussion. Uh, what we found is that, uh, we don't allow it anymore. We did allow it in the past. I think everything that was allowed in the past is probably going to flush out one way or the other. We're not going to be able to correct it this time. Uh, and the standalone lots, uh, with detention areas is, is a non-issue. The issue that, uh, it still remains is common areas that are part of a cluster subdivision. And you've got to weigh in your mind whether, uh, requiring that all common areas be part of lots is going to defeat the purpose of a cluster subdivision. Uh, if that's the case, we can just do away with cluster subdivisions, but I think, uh, those been on the books for, even before I came here twenty years ago, there was a reason to put them on there because we wanted to allow flexibility of design for subdividers to come in and, and create something that's a little bit different than a cookie cutter type of subdivision. So, uh, the, uh, suggestion by, and it is a suggestion by attorney Goddard, uh, to do away with standalone, uh, open areas or common areas, uh, does address some issues with the assessor's office, but at the same time, we've got some of our own standards to consider, and that is how we encourage cluster subdivisions and how we accommodate them. So, uh, I'm, I'm just going to open it up for your discussion and, and guidance to me. I'm not sure which way you want to go. Uh, kind of my, my inclination is that, uh, we've addressed the major issue of standalone, uh, utility types of lots for detention, uh, septic and so forth, and that we're not going to see that many in the future. The common area type of developments that we're getting, uh, we do have requirements for property owners associations that are much better than they were in the past with defined, uh, responsibilities, and I'm not, I just don't think that that's going to be an issue, or, uh, the probability is low in the future. It's not impossible, but I think the probability is low in the future for common areas and cluster subdivisions.
John, question, uh, the common areas in, say, in a, uh, cluster subdivision, is that owned by the property owners association?
It is supposed to be transferred to the property owners association, but the, the, the issue here is that so, the responsibility for these common areas that have detention facilities were supposed to be with the property owners association, and the property owners association has failed to, uh, produce on that. So it's, it's the matter of, no matter whether you have a property owners association, if they choose not to pay the taxes, it, it can still be an issue.
How, how common is that, that, uh, homeowner association would not pay the taxes?
Uh, well, you've got a few of them already.
All of these?
Not all of these, no. The, it's only, the only ones that I know have gone before, I know of two recently. One is the, the, this one.
Yeah.
That, uh, went to the courthouse step. The other is, uh, a, uh, an old, uh, drip field that was abandoned and turned into a common area for a subdivision, and, uh, the property owners association, which was really non-functional, it's a, it's a manufactured home subdivision, it was a non-functional, uh, property owners association from the get-go, and the developer, getting a lot of feedback. Bruce, could you turn it? Uh, and the, and the developer could not find anybody that would take it. He could not find a mechanism of transferring it, so he abandoned it.
What happened to it?
It got sold on the courthouse steps.
Where's it at today? Still there?
Still there. The, the person that purchased it came in and talked to me and I, and he said, what can I do with it? And I said, well, do you know what you purchased? And he said, no, it was on the courthouse steps. I bought it as is. And I told him, said, well, you bought a, a common area drip field. It's an old drip field. If you dig down about three feet or so, you're going to find a drip field that's common area for the whole subdivision. It's been abandoned and they put in a, 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 uh, sand filtration system that actually is a utility that's running it. Uh, and he said, well, I didn't quite know that. So I said, well, what you've got's what you've got. Uh, it, it, it probably has some potential for development. I don't know, but he'll have to explore that. This one that we just gave you tonight is, uh, you know, most of the property's taken up by the detention area, which has to be maintained. I mean, that's why that lot was created. And, uh, you can't mess with the detention area, so basically you've got an unbuildable lot. So you buy what you buy when you buy a tax delinquent property on the courthouse steps.
Commissioner McClellan, did you have a comment?
Just, uh, in this, uh, samples you gave us, like in Griffiths Mill, that drip field common area is, is twenty acres. Are you going to, basically, in the future, that would be have to included as part of one lot there? Sixteen, twelve or whatever?
Well, yeah, that's, that could be the extent, you know, if you, if you push that argument all the way, that it would have to be part of the lot, yes.
But can it be part of the lot and homeowners association still have to take care of it?
Yes, that, that's the idea. Even, if you, even if you have a detention facility, we're getting a lot of feedback here. Even if you have a detention facility on a, on a lot that's owned by a person, it's in an easement, and the property owners association still is charged now with, uh, responsibility of maintaining the detention facility. So they have, the, the easement is to the benefit of the property owners association for maintenance.
Mr. Roddy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, if we stop having common areas, then, then that's probably going to have a drastic change in how developers would develop subdivisions, right?
Not overall, because most developers come in with a cookie cutter design, but we will foreclose the, uh, flexibility of having a cluster subdivision. Uh, some developers, like, like Griffiths Mill, wanted to preserve the, uh, the area along the creek and make that a common area. Uh, and that's, that's good design. I mean, you know, if, if you want to preserve something, preserve something that you don't want to have development going up next to it. Uh, they also put the drip field in. That, that drip field common area doesn't extend, the drip field and the, uh, processing plant do not extend for the whole common area. It's only a portion of that, uh, in Griffiths Mill. So, they just combined that into common area and it's going to be maintained by the, uh, property owners association. Now, the, the processing area for the, for the septic is actually, uh, maintained by a utility. So that, that, there's a, there was a dual maintenance in that. I'm, I'm correct on that, right? Yeah.
John?
Yes.
And you, you know, I think of Griffiths Mill.
Yes.
It's owned by a utility and the common area is allowed for the use of the homeowners association by a utility.
The whole common area?
Of the drip field.
The drip field is part of that com, part of the common area.
It's owned by a utility.
Okay.
And they allow the utility to use the area there.
Uh, Commissioner French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Am I hearing that the staff, staff recommendation is, is going with Mr. Goddard's proposal or?
I'm not making a recommendation. I'm giving you, my, my tendency is to keep our, uh, cluster subdivision standards as they are because they're workable. Uh, the, the failure has occurred in the past on some standalone detention areas, and one unique one that was an abandoned drip field that was a common area. Uh, and, uh, those are probably going to limit themselves in the future, and I think that we're taking care of things right now. Uh, the, the one alternative to this is possibly in the future, that if you have a common area, that each lot has an undivided share of ownership in that common area. That way, they are going to be responsible, along with their property, for the taxes on it. And that would kind of force the issue a little bit better than just having it as part of a property owners association ownership. I think the assessor's office main concern is somebody's not paying taxes on a piece of property that they're assessing even at a minimal value.
Charles Cho, we're going in, into the subdu, into the subdivision and there's thirty lots in that subdivision. One thirtieth of the tax burden is, is on each homeowner, is that, in my understanding?
Well, if, if, if they have an undivided, uh, interest in the common area, it'd be one thirtieth, yes. One of the problems there is, is when you expand in phases, how are you going to then calculate, recalculate the, uh, share of the ownership in that common area? Uh, I'm, I'm quite, quite frankly, I don't think the common area is a, a broke situation. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. The, uh, the situation where you had a standalone lot with a detention facility is a broke situation, and we fixed that in the past.
Can I add something?
Sure.
I mean, I've worked on these for a long time. One thing John said about, you know, the, the share, the one thirtieth, what, what we've seen when they've phased common, common area subdivisions, planned unit developments over the years, is they've typically developed a number of lots with a commensurate amount of open space only. So, uh, you know, I think there's a way to work that out. And I want to ma, mention one other thing. The gentleman that came in, not with this one, but the, but the, the lot with the drain field that John mentioned, that was actually in Tall Oaks subdivision, the comment that he made after John explained it may have no buildable use, is he said he just wouldn't pay the taxes and let the county on it again, so. You know, that's kind of a revolving, revolving door.
Commissioner Roddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As, as the president of a homeowner's association in a development that has a lot of very picturesque common areas, uh, I would be opposed to doing away with common areas and assigning it to
Thank you for that input. Commissioner McClellan?
Are you opposed to pro-rata per lot to pay for that common area in that case, though?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I look at our common areas that we have and, and if you just stuck it on to the two lots on either side of it and stuff, that, that, the homeowner association should be able to manage that and maintain it and take care of it, and, and so, yeah, I'd be opposed to getting a fractional share.
Be, like Mr. French said, one thirtieth per.
No, I'd be opposed to that.
I have a, I live in Littlebrook and Rockford and we have a common area just like that, and we have, it's like one fiftieth share or something like that, and it does work well. We each just pay our, it's put in your taxes or whatever. And now, there is no expansion in that subdivision and I could see where that would be, but the first fifty lots or whatever, just know that's how it is, and it works really well, and there's no one person that can say, well, you, you know, you're maintaining it or whatever. So it, it does work to, uh, if there is no homeowners association, which we don't have.
Commissioner French?
That was my question. If you're opposed to the, that, what, what, what would you, you continue with what we're doing and, and let it go back to the county again if nobody pays the taxes? I'm just curious.
Yes, I, I'd, I'd leave it like it is, because I agree with John. I don't think it's broke.
Something else? With all due respect, Mr., I don't know what subdivision you live in.
Gordon's.
Oh, you live in?
Fitzroga.
Yeah, okay. Um, you know, we see a lot of subdivisions that just don't have nearly as active homeowners associations, or they have a lot of turnover in membership simply because nobody wants to maintain it over time, or they don't want them, they get the post and they don't want to do it. So I, I mean, I understand the idea of the share. I think that in order to preserve these type of developments in the future, I don't want to say it strongly, I don't think we can always rely on, you, we can have all the paperwork in the world, uh, but that doesn't mean property owners associations get maintained. And a lot of these new subdivisions are the ones that are sitting around, the, the developer, a lot of times in the, in the, in the POA documentations, the developer does not hand over ownership to the POA till a certain number of lots is sold. And in some of those subdivisions, that might not be for twenty, thirty, forty years. So, I mean, this is another method to allow these things to continue to be developed. And I feel like, you know, what Andy said, you know, he said it works, and they don't even have a property owners association, so the tax office is satisfied and we're not giving up an optional way for developers to look at developing that's not, like John said, cookie cutter. said, cookie cutter. I'm just thinking out loud, kind of trying to tie it all together. I like, I like John's comments, you know, I think that's a good idea.
Any further, uh, comments or suggestions to, uh, where we go with this? What was the motivation, Andy? Do you know when they developed that subdivision to, uh, create the, uh, one thirtieth interest?
That was probably in nineteen seventy-six, so I wasn't aware of anything back then. But it, uh, there was just no homeowners' association, so how do you do it? And the, the problem was, the, the land that's there is floodplain and unbuildable, so that's why they did it. That way, everybody owns a piece, the taxes get paid, the developer gets rid of this property, which I'm sure was his motivation.
Have you seen, John, have you seen, or Doug, have you seen any other developers coming in and doing it that way? Doing a, an undivided interest?
Not, not to my knowledge, in the time I've been here.
I think Singenbrock might do that, which is, um, BlackBerry, they sell interests in the land.
Well, they're, yeah, they, yeah, they, they, they approach it more as a kind of a condominium, uh, situation where you, you, uh, well, not even in, yeah, no, that's not even condominium.
It's a planned unit development.
Yeah.
But I think.
Well, that's the kind of subdivision that's going to take care of itself. I mean, seriously.
I guess they've convinced me I'd be okay with a one thirtieth or one fiftieth plan.
Keep, keep in mind, too, the cluster development type of subdivision isn't just to provide open space or not build, you know, just to preserve even floodplain, or a forest, or a golf course. You know, one of the advantages to the developer, you know, if we lose this, one of the advantages to the developer is cost of development. You know, cluster developments allow developers to use less land, so they build less roads, you know, they put in less utilities. The lots are smaller. They get a density break, so I would encourage you to do anything that would allow this option to stay in the subdivision regulations, because, you know, on some of these bigger tracks, they're harder to get to, so, you know, they're not all road frontage lo, tracks anymore, or further back off the road. We're in far-reaching, you know, places now, so getting the infrastructure in there is very costly, from grading to actually paving, and anything we can do to encourage development that costs less is better than taking an option away from developers, in my opinion.
I guess from my perspective, if there was a large development, say like fence rail, uh, I assume the property owners' association is now currently having to pay the taxes on that, on that land. Uh, I don't, I had a piece of property in Florida twenty-some years ago, and I had a one-sixth interest in a com, undivided, one-sixth, undivided. It was to access a lake, so it gave me right lakefront. So my, I got hit, but, but I never even noticed it on my taxes. Uh, if the property owners' association is going to have to pay the taxes, it, it would seem to me, other than the, the issue of expanding, that the, uh, undivided interest kind of takes care of the problem up front, and I guess I would go along with what you're saying, Doug. The developer would have to develop his land in such a fashion, so that phase one, if there were fifty lots, it had, he would assign the common areas to that fifty lots, and then the next fifty lots, whatever the common area, to go to it.
You can use real simple language in the property owners' association documents when you set it up, that each new lot has a proportionate share of the cost, and whenever the new lot is created, the tax assessor's office could recalculate, because they send you the bill with the amount you owe them. If there's forty-seven lots one year, and a hundred and two five years later, they can do the calculation.
Commissioner McClellan, uh, John, did you have a comment?
Well, one, one point to make on this, you know, the, one of the reasons for common area is the increase in value of the lots that are around the common area or in association with the common area. I would think that the, the assessor's office is reaping the benefit of that common area, and they, they, quite frankly, I, I, it, it kind of baffles me why they just don't discount the common area to zero with no taxes, because they're reaping the benefits and the increase in the cost or the price of the lots that are being taxed, just.
I think by Tennessee code annotated, it has to have a value on it. So it could be one dollar, and most of these common areas are valued at like a thousand dollars, so, you know, you take twenty-five percent of that, and that's two hundred and fifty dollars times two dollars and fifteen cents per hundred, you know, you virtually got no tax bill to be shared forty ways or whatever, but I think that, that way, to be set up and be divided, you know, you're going to pay pennies for having that common area, but you have to have a value.
As you've seen, though, even when there's pennies and there's no homeowners' association.
Yeah, well, that raises my next question. Refresh my memory, is that why we're here, discussing this, is because we're having problems on the courthouse steps, or?
Well, there've been, there've been, there've been a few sales recently that have kind of come back, uh, like the, the one that came into my office and said, "Well, I just, I just won't pay the taxes, I'll go back to county again." You're going to get a perpetual motion machine.
Can these not be identified on the courthouse steps as unbillable or a common area, or?
Who's going to buy them? The county ends up owning them anyway.
Doesn't, if, I mean, you, that office holds the taxes, not the planning department, so it's how they advertise it, right?
Property assessors' offices don't hold, you know, they don't advertise it.
Commissioner Hendrick?
But therein lies the problem. I, I think I'm hearing what you're saying. We, being the county, we don't want them back, because we're going to have to maintain them. It's going to cost us money. Let's put the mechanism in place where we don't get them back.
All right. Brad, you got something more?
Well, that's what I was going to say. That can just, you know, it's kind of like Andy said, if this could be set up to where if you buy a lot in there, you're just, you're buying a share, because the property assessor's office has got a value, has to have a value on it, whether it be a dollar, whether it be a million dollars.
John, could I suggest that you take a look at what language you would have to add and where?
That, that's what I was going to come back with. We'll, we'll come back with something that's, uh, either a formal wording or, uh, a guidance to you when you have something like this, that we can give to the, uh, developers when they come in, that when they write up their, uh, property owners' association, uh, and their restrictions, the covenants and restrictions, that they make sure that every lot that's created has an undivided interest in the common area.
Uh, okay. I think, Doug, I think the, the one that puts it up for sale's the clerk and master's office.
Let me ask you another question, Brad.
Sure.
I mean, you said they could set the value at a dollar, for instance. I mean, another option would be they could set, set common area at a dollar and assess it.
They can, that don't mean they will.
No, I understand. I mean, that would be something that someone needs to talk to the assessor about, and see if that was accepted. Whatever, let's say there's a nominal amount, whatever it is, they could always assess it to one lot, and the person buying that lot know it, would know they're paying for it.
Right.
As long as they knew in advance. I mean, it's just an idea. There's, there are some options, we're just not looking at.
They are, yeah, and I'm like you, I, I'm for keeping those in there, too. I think they're a big draw, and they're a good thing for subdivisions, because, you know, everybody likes a little open space, or even trees, a closed space, just to, just to break up the, the subdivision.
I just don't think it's a time to take a lower, potentially lower class development option away from.
All right, I, I agree.
Thank you, Brad.
Commissioner McClellan?
Uh, just an example in, in Knox County, familiar with a subdivision called Tanara or West, which deeds a lot plus one twentieth or some portion of the, uh, lakefront area for all the lots to use, from the same thing for our common area, we, plus one twentieth of the common area.
Yes.
R T D.
All right, I think we have an, at least an approach, and John, you understand what, what we're suggesting, so if you'll bring us something back in the future, we'll, uh, take a look at it. Thank you, gentlemen. It was good, uh, good discussion. Uh, John, did you have anything else?
Yes, under staff reports, I want to report that the campground and RV parks regulations amendments passed at the last county commission meeting, uh, that's a good five and a half year effort, and I, I appreciate all your, your discussion and effort in that. That, it usually doesn't take that long, but it, that one did. Uh, the RAC two zone amendment, uh, public hearing is June ninth at six o'clock P M before the, uh, county commission. Uh, I've got a population at the speed of life presentation on June thirtieth. I think I've sent out a notice by email to everyone, but on June thirtieth at six thirty P M at the library, it's going to be a one-hour presentation instead of an hour and a half, because this is to the general public, and, uh, reduced the, uh, amount of detail in the presentation a little bit. And if you're available, uh, next Monday, uh, at around lunchtime, they're having a, uh, the East Tennessee Quality Growth Organization is having a brown bag lunch starting at eleven thirty at the Knoxville United Way, and I'll be presenting the population at the speed of life for a six county, sixteen county perspective. If anybody's interested and want to bring their lunch, you can, you can get an hour's credit there also during the daytime. That's all I have.
What does that mean, you know?
The last one?
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's eleven thirty at the Knox County United Way, and I ha, I think I have sent out a, uh, notice to you on that one. I will resend it tomorrow, if I can remember to do that.
Is that the one that they wanted, originally didn't need an R S V P?
Yes, and then they, they do now, but don't worry about it, because I think they've got it so garbled that, uh, they will take anybody who comes in. Okay?
Brad, here is a, uh, write-up on it. And it's an extra copy, so you can have this one. Uh, if there's nothing else from staff, uh, anyone here that would like to, uh, speak for public input on items not on the agenda? If there are none, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.